It's that time. I'd like to call the order, the City of Sagatuck City Council meeting for Tuesday, November 12th. If the clerk could please call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Do we have to do the Pledge of Allegiance?
Oh, I'm sorry. Please, if you could all, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I already have it messed up.
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My apologies. Thank you, Scott. All right. If the clerk could, please call the roll.
Anderson?
Here.
Baldwin?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
Dean?
Here.
Gardner?
Here.
Muncie?
Stanton?
Here.
Do you have a form?
Okay. And now we are on to the selection of mayor and mayor pro temp. I just want to say that I appreciate Ryan and Jamie helping with this and making sure that we were doing it historically, the way we've done it in the past several times when we've had a new council. And this is just the point where we make a selection and we move on for our next council for this coming year. So at this time, if I could have a nomination for mayor.
Mayor, it's my great honor to nominate Holly Anderson for the position of the mayor of Sagatuck.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. If the clerk could call the roll.
Anderson?
Awkwardly, I will say yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
No.
Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carries?
All right. Congratulations. So this is where you take over. Hello.
All right. Do we have a nomination for mayor pro temp?
Madam Mayor, I would like to nominate Lauren Stanton to be mayor pro temp.
I will second it.
All right.
Any discussion? We don't do discussion, right? We just vote.
Okay.
That's okay.
Okay. So will the clerk call the roll?
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
No, and I should have added at my last no that this is not a no against the council members who I have a pleasure of serving with. It's against the process.
Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Congratulations, Lauren.
Thank you. Thank you for serving.
Lauren.
All right. Well, Lauren, did you want to make last mayor's comments or is that on me?
You know, I just want to say it's been a real honor to have been the City of Sagatuck's mayor for the past year. I think this was by far one of the most difficult years in my professional career. A lot of challenging things that happened, a lot of difficult decisions that we had to make as a council, and it was contentious. There was, you know, my picture was in the front of a storefront for most of the year and it wasn't great, but we got past it. I might have gotten some thicker skin through it all, but in the end, as mayor, I was just really proud to serve this city that I love so very much. And it was just a real honor to have been selected to be mayor and to again be serving on council for now my third term. So thank you all. Thank you very much.
I will just quickly add a beautiful and moving Veterans Day service yesterday and a thank you to everyone in the city who has served and their families. It's a, it's a lot, we ask a lot of people who serve and so it was nice to acknowledge them. Big season for the Sagatuck football. It, you know, always tough to have it end, but what a great season it was been. Lauren, thank you. You, you have been a phenomenal mayor and I am sad to see you leave that position. You really took on some tough challenges and with grace and I really appreciate how you did the job as well as what we did. I wish you had wanted to serve a second term because you really, I think you were phenomenal. So thank you so much. I also want to just acknowledge Helen for your service to the city, working with Scott and his team and your PPW committee. You have really energized the city's commitment to our parks and green space. The playground is world-class and, you know, you and the team, you know, again, supported by this council, really made that happen. We're making good progress with Mount Bald Head and getting needed improvements there. And I know, you know, that's, that's great. The airport property and, and, you know, working with the donor, getting that constant, working with ODC. You are a fiercely determined woman who has vision and leadership to get stuff done. So for PPW and also your work on SDRs, I thank you a lot and I will miss having you part of this council. So that's it for me. Mr. City Manager, interim, interim.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're both getting used to this over here. So and congratulations to both of you, you and Mayor Pro Temp Stanton. And also congratulations to Chris Peterson for, for being elected to the council. I think Chris has seen me wear a suit into City Hall both times, one when I was interviewing for the superintendent position of Public Works and then one tonight. So somehow that happened. But, but then also big congratulations and thank you to Jamie Walters and Sarah Williams during the election. I've personally seen what kind of stress is required of that position. And I really feel very strongly that Sagatuck City is well-served with, with you taking on that responsibility. So congratulations to a job well done on that. And also just a thank you to a lot of the community members. There's so much passion revolving around that willow tree over at Cook Park. I have gotten so many, so many ideas about what could be done with it, but it all stems from passion. And, you know, we take a lot of pride in our urban forest program with the city and that's just a small reflection of that. So and then one more, just highlight the public works staff today. They, they, to put it lightly, they busted their tails with the leaf piles that are out there. There is just, it never ends, it seems like when it's this time of year. There's really two brush and leaf collections where it's just, it's daunting. So today in particular, we calculated that we trucked out about 40 dump trucks worth of leaves just today. And that put just a small dent in the amount of volume that's out there. So I'm really grateful. We have a lot of pressure at Public Works right now to, you know, winterize all the equipment and the irrigation systems, you know, Christmas decorations. We have deadlines for those before the tree lighting ceremony. There's a lot of work that goes into that, heavy leaf pickup. And somehow I'm fortunate to have the staff that I've got that they, they can get a lot done in a short period of time. So I'm very grateful and thankful to them and their hard work.
Yeah, thanks Scott for the update. Quick question on the leaf and brush pickup. So that will continue until the first snow. Is that correct?
So this is, this week is our second to last brush and leaf collection. The final collection is scheduled for right before Thanksgiving, so November 25th and 26th.
No snow in the forecast for the foresee of a future. So, okay, thank you.
Um, any agenda changes? No guest speakers, correct? That brings us to public comment on agenda items only. Anyone would like to make a comment who's in the room, come to the podium. Anyone online? Okay. Then that takes us to the consent agenda. Oh, okay. Oh, Gary. Gary, you start with your name and yep, unmute yourself.
Gary Medler, 461 Bying Street. I wish the public comment had come before the selection of the mayor. I wish somebody had described the historical process by which you pick the mayor. It's unfortunate that the mayor's selection was decided over a month ago in secret by members of city council. And I have the proof of that and I am going to be reporting that proof. In addition, all of reporting on all the secret meetings that have been going on running the city council, including the encrypted messenger system. I don't need anybody to deny it because I have the proof, but you should have put public comments before the mayor. And it's unfortunate that we have selected a mayor based on decisions that were made outside of city council and outside the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Anyone else? Okay, then back to the consent agenda, which is the regular meeting minutes from October 28th, 2024.
Madam Mayor, I will make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes as presented for October 28th, 2024.
Second.
This is a roll call vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Any discussion? Okay.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Okay, moving on to staff reports. Anything, any questions? I know Ryan had his report in the packet. Any questions for either Scott or Treacher's report? Any questions? Scott, anything for you to add to that?
No.
Clerk's report, Jamie?
Yes.
Yeah.
I just wanted to give a big thanks to my election team and we, we had a 79.98% turnout of voters and I think that's remarkable. So thanks for everyone that came out. Early voting was a success. It was huge. It was so busy and it really helped alleviate our election day by having those people vote early. So I just want to give a big thanks to our election team. We have just the best team, so.
And thank you for leading them. You're, it's a, it is a, an art to watch, Jamie, manage that art. Planning and zoning? Anything? No, Luke's report was in Department of, well, DPW. Anything else, Scott, you want to say with that?
Yeah, I just want to highlight that, you know, among the other priorities that we have going on right now at Public Works, last week we were able to plant 15 trees that were funded in part by Consumers Energies, Street and Boulevard Tree Planting Grant. So the city, we haven't officially received payment for it yet, but our entire completed grant application has been submitted to consumers. So hopefully we get those funds coming in soon. But then in addition to of those 15 trees, I actually, going back to the willow tree one more time, I'm sorry, it's just such a big deal for the city. But, you know, one of the, one cool thing that I thought that happened was I had one of the residents that contacted me and said that they were able to get some limbs off this tree and, and plant them in their backyard. And so this might be a thing where, you know, that tree might live on in a lot of different ways around the city. So I thought it was really creative and unique and willow trees definitely lend themselves well to be able to withstand that.
Sergeant House, anything? Great, thank you.
Just a moment. Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I do want to mention that I had a, someone mentioned that you have your deputies walking around town a bit more.
Trying to.
Yeah, so that's been noticed. It's been noticed. Thank you. Yeah, positive thing. Thank you.
And I don't think Mr. Moxey's on the call. So, all right. That takes us to boards and commissions and committees. Doesn't look like Dan is here.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
No, Dan is not able to be here tonight. I saw him last night. He came down here for the meeting last night.
Okay.
Said, I need to look at my agenda a little bit more closely. So.
All right.
He is not able to be here tonight.
All right. Well, we'll catch up with him next time. Inner Urban Board, Gregory's not here. Cow Lake, do we have anybody here for that? Harbor Authority, ZBA, I know the ZBA canceled their next meeting. Historic District Commission.
Yeah, thank you very much. We met last Thursday, the 7th. And I'll, I'll start by a compliment that one of the commissioners gave at the meeting and towards the end of the meeting. And a commissioner who's been on this commission for a few years and said, you know, he thinks this is the best commission he's served on since he's been on there. He thought that everybody's working well together, knowledgeable and very considerate of the applicants. And, and I found that to be very heart, very heartening. So we had a pretty busy agenda. So our first one was for 249 Mason was for outdoor deck and signage and that was for the new Lulu Kadu space in the bank building. So the application was approved with one exception. There was a proposal to have a outdoor sign on the west side of the building, which would be next to the Mize Rose Garden. The commission discussed that and, and, and said that that was probably not a good place to have a sign, especially with the, you know, the purpose of the Rose Garden. So Terry was kind enough to remove that from the application. It was approved subsequently to that. So she's got a lot of exciting things planned there. The next one was 740 Lake Street, exterior renovation to a residential unit, and that was approved as well. It actually happens to be.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stanton's house. They don't want to put names behind these, but anyways, very, very nice application. The last one was of great interest to me personally. That was 142 Butler. So 142 Butler is the building down the street, two in from Kilwens. It used to be the Coon Restaurant. I've been doing some research with some of my historical folks here in town, trying to get some more information on it. But they're going to be doing a rehab to the front of the building and they're going to be putting, they're supposed to put in a stairwell so they could get to a apartment that's upstairs, which hasn't been used since the 60s, according to the owner and according to Chuck Carlson, the architect. But we had a lot of conversation about the building itself and its past uses. And at one time it was known as the Parrot, the Green Parrot Cafe, the Michigan Restaurant. So don't know where that ever went, but subsequent to that, it's been restaurants. And so I've been doing some research with some of my old time folks in town to get some more information because the owner of the building is very interested in learning more about the use of the building over the years. It's primarily been a restaurant up until recently. And the exterior renovation of that was approved. And we also elected our officers. Tim Straker will continue as our, excuse me, as our chair and Ken Patterson will be our vice chair. And secretary is Will. Can't remember Will's last name right offhand, but.
Danny Donahue.
Thank you. Will Donahue. That was it.
Great.
One, one last thing. The Historic Commission has asked this question in the past. I'm coming forward again. I'd like the council to, the commission would like the council to have some discussion about setting policies and priorities for the commission for the coming year. They already have, we already have some goals and objectives in place. But the commission would like to hear from the council if there's anything specific that they would like them to take a look at from a policy standpoint. So if you have any ideas, let me know or let Chairman Straker know as well.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks. Planning, Joe?
Madam Mayor, there's nothing to report. We do have our next meeting scheduled for December 2nd. So long overdue and certainly be giving you an update afterwards.
Great. Thanks. Helen?
PPW, there's talk, a little bit of talk of possibly canceling this next meeting at the end of the month, just because there's going to be a transition and new council representation, things like that. So just stay tuned and see if that comes to, needs to be.
Tri-Community Trail?
Nothing to report this meeting.
All right. Water Systems Operations Contract Advisory Committee.
Yeah, we have a meeting scheduled in December. I don't have the exact date, but it's now been coordinated with the City of Douglas and the township.
I think it's the 4th.
Thank you. December 4th.
And Scott, the Wildlife Management Committee.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We had our first kickoff meeting at 6 o'clock over in Douglas. We got a lot done in about 15 minutes before I had to depart for this meeting. We did select our chairperson, which will be council member Seaver over on the Douglas Village Council. Vice Chair will be a Sagatuck resident, Mr. Walker, who I believe lives over in Dune Ridge. And Tammy Cunyan, a resident of Douglas, will act as our secretary. Our next meeting will be on, we will meet monthly on Wednesdays at 6:00 PM. Our next meeting, I believe, is December 4th of this year. Obviously, our focus will be on the deer population. And the focus will be initially looking at, you know, in the interim, educating the community, the tri-community area on interim measures we can take around, you know, not feeding the deer, things of that nature, things that we can do without getting a necessary permit. But I believe the, the committee will look very closely at a organized hunt for 2025's deer season in the fall. I think there's going to be a lot of interest and we've already got some materials on what Lake Town Township has done over at the Heizer Blueberry Field. This is all very, you know, this was very first blush kind of conversations. But I think some of the early discussions will be around, you know, a managed archery hunt, which, you know, given the very expensive nature of hiring sharpshooters to call deer, that's quite expensive. And given that there's a lot of passion around hunting in, in the community, there, there seemed to be immediate energy in the committee to explore that. Our, our next step will likely be to bring in a DNR's West Michigan Deer Management Specialist to kind of do a level set for, for the committee so they can understand how other communities have, have tackled this program. But once again, this, these were very cursory discussions. Literally, we were there, well, I was there for about 15 or 20 minutes at most. So more to come.
Great. Thanks. Questions for Scott on that? All right. Approval of accounts payable.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the accounts payable in the amount of $270,636.68.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. It's a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carries?
All right. No public hearings or unfinished business, which takes us to new business. The updated waste and recycling collection and disposal agreement with Republic Services. Do you have anything?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just to recap, I think this has been pretty well dissected at this point, but the cities, under the cities' garbage and rubbish ordinance, the city is to provide for a designated contractor to perform certain waste services. Currently, we're at the tail end of a five-year agreement with Republic Services. This was initially brought up to council at the early September workshop for discussion. What came out of that discussion led to the desire to push out a community survey. The survey indicated that overall residents are satisfied with the service that they're receiving from Republic or at the very least neutral about it. And that the survey also indicated that residents would like to increase recycling. So since September, staff has been working with Republic on the terms of service, which includes pricing. Some of the notable changes to the agreement is instead of a five-year extension, this one would be a four-year extension. It would increase, double the recycling collection to bi-weekly. There is a price increase. It's a little more than what we had thought, but I feel confident that that, that number was negotiated to its limit. So increase of $4.53 per month for your traditional 96-gallon cart service, and that is for both recycling and trash. There's also a price increase for year, I'm sorry, rear yard service. So if the driver needs to go into the backyard to get, collect the bin, then there's a little surcharge for that. That price increase from $15 a month to 20. And then built into the agreement as well as a little bit of language relating to the city's ability to request some reports if we are getting service complaints or if people are being, reporting missed pickups or whatever, we can review those reports. So after two workshop meetings in September about this, a community survey, negotiating the terms, negotiating the price, legal review, staff review, and then the discussion that we had at last week Wednesday's workshop meeting, I feel pretty confident that we've covered the agreement that's being presented to you tonight. And if you agree, there's a motion before you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve the contract with Allied Waste Services Incorporated, doing business as Republic Services of Genesee for waste collection and disposal.
Second.
Any discussion, questions?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I would just say two things. One is I'm very excited to get rid of my second recycling-only cart. We had to get two because of the infrequency of the collection. So that'll be very, very helpful to us. Two is I also want to say thank you to Councilmember Clark because you kind of grabbed at my heart when you started talking about CPI and is that the best we could get? Because that's kind of the direction I go in on this stuff. So I look forward to working with you on future contracts as well. I think we think the same in terms of some of those issues. So, you know, I've had a good experience with Republic and, and I think most other folks have too, based on the survey responses. And primarily what we heard was we want a second recycling pickup, which we're accomplishing with this. And there's a price increase. You know, that just goes with the territory these days is that, you know, it's difficult to make money. And, and again, I don't, you know, promote any company that wants to try to make money off its services, right? So I don't, I think it's reasonable and looking forward to saying yes.
Yeah, it's a, it's a reasonable price increase, but we get something out of it. We get, you know, twice a month recycling. It's what we've been asking for, for a really long time. And I appreciate Ryan negotiating this and I think he did a great job getting the best we could out of this deal. So.
I'll second the comments. Actually being kind of the analytical nut job, I am, I kind of went through the numbers again. And, and actually, it's not a, it's, it's not a bad deal for the city. I mean, if you factor in the inflation that they were bound, that they were not able to raise their rates through and you factor that in, plus the additional pickup, it's, it's, it's not like it's a big jump in, in, in cost for us. So hats off to the negotiating team that put it together.
Great. Thanks. Any, anything else? Great. Jamie, will you call the, do a roll call vote?
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Okay. That brings us to the second public comment period. This can be public comment about anything. Anybody in the room have a public comment?
Good evening. Bobby Gont, 341 Main Street. And I'd just like to thank you all for your service. And thank you, Chris, and congratulations. And I'd also like to acknowledge Jamie and Sarah. I was a election inspector for both early voting and then on the day, just a week ago, believe it or not. And just very well done, Jamie and Sarah. So, and I really look forward to the leadership of this council in terms of all of the issues that are really ahead of us, considering the moment in which we are living, as well as strategic issues that are facing the city. So I look forward to that very much. And also congratulations, Holly and Lauren. Thank you.
Thanks, Bobby.
Thanks, Bobby.
Anyone online? All right. Well, that will close public comments. Didn't look like we had, did we have correspondence? Okay. So council comments. Joe?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I want to thank former, is it former mayor? That sounds good, doesn't it? Stanton and Councilmember Baldwin for their service to the city. I think you said it all. It's been a tough year. And, you know, I think that you, you both served the city very well with honor and distinction. And I hope the whole town is behind me in thanking you for your service. On a personal note, you both inspired me to give it my best. And, and I know you've set a high bar that'll be hard to, hard to meet. So, but thank you. My family thanks you. And again, I hope the whole town does. I want to thank and recognize the election workers and our clerk's team, flawless execution. Even had to put up with some of my, my poor humor coming through here. But you guys really, I know it was a long, long day. A lot of work went into it. So thank you. And I also want to thank our DPW team, the work that was done on Francis, which I got a front row seat on. It was done flawlessly. I mean, you guys orchestrated it beautifully with the contractors, with the engineers. Your guys were out there prepping everything. It went smoothly. It was clean. I would have to say from the last time, the experiences from the last time we went through this, no question, this was a much, much better job and much better experience. So thank you and I hope you'll thank your team. And that's it. Thank you.
But stuff to follow, but I'll, I'll reiterate what Councilmember Clark said. I'll, I'll start with the election. I'd like to thank. I'd like to thank Jamie and her volunteers for putting on a safe and secure election. Moving on to Veterans Day, I'd like to thank Post one thirty seven here in Sagatuck for organizing the Veterans Day event, along with the Sagatuck High School, which had a breakfast for veterans as well on on Veterans Day. Would like to, yeah, thank the DPW team. Once again, I'm like Joe was a recipient of some fresh asphalt on Francis Street. And it looks really good. And the team's doing a great job with fall activities, such as the leaf pickup and dealing with the tree issue we have. Moving to today, I'd like to thank Lauren and Helen for their service to the community and continued service. Like to congratulate Chris for joining us again on the council. And congratulations to you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I hope I haven't forgotten anyone.
I want to thank the public, serving is a privilege, and I'm grateful for the opportunity. I want to thank Lauren. To serve in a front row seat along her as pro tem has been really just a pleasure. She's a really good example of grace under pressure, shepherdess through a lot of tumultuous times, took a lot of heat and always kept her cool. Sagatuck is very lucky to have you for that, Lauren. Of course, falling short is always a disappointment, but I'm very proud of my record. I'm proud of the campaign I ran, all the ways I contributed in a very busy two years, notably getting meaningful reform on short-term rental legislation, all the projects we pulled through, the PPW, such as New Playground, especially getting the trails opened up at the airport property. I wouldn't change a thing. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to echo again for the election. We're very lucky to have the staff and the volunteers, not even the volunteers, the people that work the polls. Just very lucky that everything went as expected. Also want to say, you know, Veterans Day, the event downtown. My father, Bob Gardner, is a sergeant of arms. So if you saw the gentleman that was putting the wreath at the, at the memorial, that was my father. So sorry if I tear up a bit, but he's, my dad's eighty-six years old and I'm just super proud of him. So also want to thank Rick Gilman and Rob Boyce. I think Rob Boyce is the post commander. Rick Gilman is the other gentleman that sat up at the front with the chaplain. And I also want to thank Father Corey. He always comes up with something very interesting to say. And I just really appreciate his perspective on these events. I do want to thank Lauren. Lauren, you ran some great meetings for us. I know it was a tough year. Some of those were legacy issues, which don't occur often. And I view this as an opportunity now to move away from those legacy issues. Some of them may not go away immediately. But this is an opportunity for this council to move away from things that were done in the past that do not need to be repeated. I think, help for your passion. You and I've had a lot of conversations. You don't always agree, but your passion comes through. So I want to thank you for your service to the city. And now I gotta put my Russ Gardner hat back on. So next workshop agenda, I definitely want to have the city begin talking again about reviewing ethics policy. I know there's a cost item on the accounts payable that the firm is doing work for us. I'm going to be emailing Ryan to make it better and understand exactly what they've been asked to do. I don't think it goes as far as what this council should go. We at the very least need, and we can maybe do this through the policy updates, is create a city policy around social media guidance for us, the elected officials, appointed officials and city employees when representing the city. We are in a different age when it comes to communication, and I think the city can do far better at this for its citizens as well as the people that serve the city. Also, we'd like to have on the next workshop agenda, city manager goals and objective setting. This has been brought up four times. We have yet to put that, put that on the agenda, and I'd like to see that up for discussion immediately. It is well past time for us to begin talking with Ryan about what our expectations are for his performance. And also with some of the changes taking place, I'd also like to see us, we typically will do this, is have a purpose and framework of city boards and commissions item fit to purpose at our next workshop agenda. Thank you.
I just want to echo everyone's comments about the clerk's office and your, all the volunteers on Election Day. I voted early for the first time. I enjoyed that. And everyone that spent all the extra time making it, making it work, and it was fantastic. Did a great job. Veterans Day, just want to commend the school for doing a breakfast for Veterans Day for the first time. Liz Wilson and the crew making that happen. And of course, the ceremony here in Sagatuck and as well in Douglas. The new veterans sign at Veterans Park in Douglas is really lovely. It's one of my walks that I do. So it was really nice to go by there today to see the new sign there. I have to commend Helen. You know, we work side by side as mayor and mayor pro tem. But in particular, as Chair of the Parks and Public Works Committee, you guys got so much done. I mean, we, it's just incredible the amount of work that got done. You guys, passionate group. And you led that group and got, you know, you just weren't messing around. You were getting things done. And we just can't thank you enough for everything that you made happen this year. And I'll miss serving with you. But I know there's more to come. And then to Holly, thank you. I know you would have rather had me stay on as mayor. You and I had these discussions. And I really wanted you to take this on. It was, it's a lot as mayor. It's, it's a full-time job. I think you know that, Chris. It's a full-time job. And when I was trying to run two businesses and I have a son at home still trying to make dinner before these meetings, it's a lot. So I really appreciate you taking this on. And I know you're going to do fantastic. And you just, I look up to you and I look forward to serving with you as well. I guess that's all.
Well, thank you for being mayor pro tem. I look forward to working with you. And appreciate the the confidence of council. I know it has been a rough year and it's been especially contentious, feisty. There's been a lot of energy throughout the year, but especially in the in the recent months. And my hope is that we can move on together. We, you know, when you look at how we vote, mostly we agree. And sometimes, you know, especially around short-term roll caps, we have disagreed passionately. But I hope we can work as a council. And Chris, I look forward to, I will spend more time talking about you next time was we officially welcome you. But I look forward to working with each council member individually to get to know you better, to would love to spend time individually with everybody to talk about where we see opportunities and how we can work as a council better and represent the city better. I will channel or model Jamie Walters to the extent that I can in being fair, doing the work, being kind to everyone. I think if you know Jamie, you can never really tell who she likes or doesn't like. She, she really plays it by the book. And I hope a year from now, people can say that I remind them of Jamie. So I'm easy to reach for people in the community, for everybody on council. I know we can, I know we can do great things for this community. We all love it. And that's my hope. So thanks to everybody. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.